Committee, the special meeting today, Monday, February 12th at 7:00 PM in town hall. This meeting is being held both in person and virtually on Zoom and anybody wants to watch. Link is online. If I could just maybe have each of you going left to right, call out your name since we don't have officers yet to do a roll call and we want to make sure that the attendance is recorded for all history. Tristan Young.
Chris Wilson.
Maria Weingarten present.
Phil Correct present.
John Goodwin present.
Jane Williams present.
Hillary Ormond present.
Michael Sweeney present.
If you have somebody online.
Yes.
Jeff Williams is present.
Hi. Okay. Thank you. Oh, yeah. Okay. Thank you all for being here. I know it's been a long for some of you. Well, members of boards, you've been waiting for this committee to be fully formed for a while. And I wanted to thank all of you for committing your time to what we've all been saying is one of the most important efforts of this community for the next number of years. So it's a big job and I know that Steve, myself and Amy, who cannot be here tonight, but expressed her regrets at not being able to be here to welcome all of you. We're all just really excited that you've all been willing to take this on. And I see Scott Hobbs in the back over there. He has volunteered to, you know, sort of help, help you out along the way. He's sort of our resident expert on affordable housing. So thank you, Scott, for all you've done and will continue to do for this committee. Hey, Dan. Thank you. And Dan Radman's here.
Hey.
P and Z. So he'll be working closely with the P and Z as well. So thank you very much. I just wanted to both, I know Steve has brought it up. I just wanted to, you know, talk a little bit about sort of priorities from my office for this committee as you go forward. As you all know, the 830G is an overhanging piece of legislation that, you know, isn't, is not even close to being perfect, but we have to comply with it. So, and we want to do it in a way that, you know, really speaks to the character of this community while also providing housing for those who need it. And so, you know, I think for me, as you look at sort of the charter and what the ordinance for this committee, you know, when it was formed, I'm looking to this group to look at where are we going to put affordable housing? What's it going to look like? And, and try and keep it in keeping with, you know, the way we, you know, the look and feel of this community and, and then how are we going to fund it? So, and then finally, and this came up recently in a conversation with Scott, as we get more and more units in the community, we currently have a volunteer board, affordable housing board that manages the properties. And we have to really think about, is that a sustainable model or not? So, you know, how, how do we, you know, manage these properties going forward? So that's my charge to all of you and we have an amazing group here. So thank you again.
Yeah, I just, you know, I wanted to, I wanted to say that seeing all of you together, I mean, this is over a year's worth of work. And this is the first time we've actually seen this group together sitting and asking each one of you to serve on this committee. And then finally seeing everybody together. This is a, this is a big night. This is a big night to get this established. As Deanna said, I think it's one of the most important committees that we've put together in this town in a very, very long time. 830G has, you know, been an issue with us to try to figure out how to continue our affordable housing in New Canaan in terms of building it, reaching the moratoriums and satisfying the needs of the community. This committee was put together with the idea that we would take all the big stakeholders in town and put them in one room. We've got obviously the Board of Selectments here. We've got Town Council Representation, Board of Finance Representation, Housing Authority is here and we have planning and zoning and putting all of those liaisons together in the room. So it shortcuts a lot of this conversation that always happens when you get into these committees. Well, what do you think Board of Finance? What do you think the Town Council? This committee now is a unique organization that has representation in the room to get things done, make decisions and get things moving quickly. And we're going to need to be able to do that because everybody says, well, four years is a, is a long time. Well, it's not a long time when you consider what we're up against. So this is a very, very important committee and I'm thrilled that you guys have taken a role on it. So I think it's the beginning of something great that's going to happen. I think towns will model this as well. So I just wanted to, before we get into the nuts and bolts of the meeting, I did want to just mention the ordinance itself and the, and the birth of the ordinance through the Town Council. And Hillary, who's on this committee and Tom Butterwood really deserve a shout out from the town for putting this ordinance together and moving it forward. We, we hit a lot of stumbling blocks along the way. It's not easy. I mean, you're actually witnessing government grinding here because it's been a lot to get us to tonight. So we're finally here and we're very happy to be here. So I wanted to give them a shout out. And then again, we've already mentioned, you know, Dan Radman and Scott are both in the room, but they've played important roles in terms of trying to, trying to push this along and get this moving. So thanks to them as well. And I really don't have too much else to say other than, you know, in looking through the ordinance, you know, in terms of this committee and their charge, some of the things that we set out originally, like hitting a moratorium, we've actually, Deanna's gone ahead and tried to push that as she's taken her role on here and get that done. So obviously we want to make sure that the moratoriums are met as we go along here. We also, this committee is put together because we all believe in affordable housing. We all want affordable housing. We're, we're, we're all together saying it's a good thing to have affordable housing. It's the, what we're hearing from our community though, is we want to control where it goes. We want to be able to say, this is where we'd like to see it and keep our town looking and feeling the way it has for a long time. So that's really the charge. And in terms of funding, we talked in subcommittee about funding this committee with whatever you guys need. I mean, you know, obviously you've said it's the most important thing we're doing right now. If you need consultant help, if you need whatever, whatever you decide that you need, we're here to listen. And we're here to provide the funding that you'll need to get the work done. So I wanted to send that message. Also talking about future funding of major, major part of this, which is how are we going to afford property? How are we going to put the money aside to be able to do what we want to do? So these are all issues that we'll be tackling along the way. So that's all I have for now as far as funding goes. And you know, I'll take it back to Deanna. I think we have to, what's next? You have the Office of.
Yep. Yep. So and then you guys can just take them off.
Some questions too. I mean, that's, that's, you know, any questions for us while we're here. It's, you know, we're, we're going to try to obviously attend as much as possible, but if you have any questions going in, happy to have you fire away. It's probably early.
Yeah. What do you see as sort of target dates or, you know, what sort of thing would you like to see us accomplish in three months, six months, nine months?
Oh goodness, you know.
At a high level, you know.
I think, you know, obviously in four years, I'd like us to get to the next moratorium. So, you know, we're supposed, if all things go well, you know, we hope to have our moratorium in place in April, you know. And so we'll have, that'll give us four years of breathing room to be able to develop the next project. So I think, you know, I don't have, I probably need to go back and look at a bigger time, you know, a time step. There's going to be a lot of learning that all of you are going to need to do about, you know, where do we have availability of property currently that maybe, you know, some we could utilize? I think, you know, the priority is to do the 100%. Well, that is your job, the 100% affordable units. And, you know, that we can maintain their affordability in perpetuity. I'm not interested in the 40-year, 30% projects. And so, you know, that would be my priority to you. Those are real, those will make real dense in our numbers. And so to help us get to the next moratorium. And Sarah Carey will be a great resource for this committee. She's our town planner to help you guys with whatever you need along the way. You know, let me get back to on timetables because I haven't really thought through it. I've been spending so much time like getting committees seated and, and getting those going. But, you know, you're going to be spending a fair amount of time identifying locations and working, you know, on funding. So.
It might be helpful for those of us who are novices like myself, understanding the protocol you have to go through in order to get something done in the town, the Town Council, the Select. So you say four years, is that like a spade in the ground? Is that building up? Is that for you? So I think it's pretty.
Yeah, it's a certificate.
That's a project.
Just brings to definition. It's, and that really helps us create a work.
Yep. No, that's, that's a fair, that's a fair ask. So I will.
And one, and one of the things right in the ordinance is, you know, obviously there's public education, but there's also, you know, we, we actually, part of the ordinance says public education where we're actually out there trying to bring the public along with, along for the journey that we're about to undertake. And that's, that's a really important part of what you guys are going to be doing is having meetings and sort of bringing everybody up to speed of why are we doing this? Why, you know, why are these decisions being made? And that's a really important part of what you're going to be doing. And the good news is a lot of the education has taken place simply because this issue has literally come to everybody's kitchen table over the past couple of years. And I don't know too many residents that aren't aware of the issue because, you know, it's been all over the news, been the press, been local press. So it's really come into each home to say, hey, this is an issue that, you know, we, we need to come up with solutions here. And, you know, we will be doing that. So, and that's part of that public education. And, and there's so many folks who say, well, you know, I didn't know about this or I didn't know about that. Well, now we have another, this is a high profile committee. So if you're not, if the public doesn't pay attention to this, you know, we can't help it. It really, you guys will be out in, in front of the public and, and hopefully the message will be delivered.
And I think, Deanna, maybe you could Reader's Digest version for everybody, that the sort of state where we are with, you said that you submitted the moratorium application, which is great, and hopefully that's granted by April. But we also have pending litigation that could impact what our job might be in identifying how many units we'll need for another moratorium.
Actually, I don't, we can get that specific list from Sarah.
Okay.
If we, if, there's one piece of pending legislation that could on some units that were denied. So, but that's not going to happen anytime in the next year. So there's not really anything we can do within the next year to, you know, so you can't, you can't rely on those units. You know, so I think a good working assumption is we start from the leftover units that we have after this moratorium. And we do have leftover units after this moratorium, moratorium application. So we start with that and then, and then move forward. And, and Sarah will be instrumental in helping with all that, that kind of data because she is the keeper of all affordable housing unit data. And she's, she's been really great to work with. And so.
So maybe we can have her in at our next meeting, just to give us the lay of the land of how many units we're looking at, under what scenario, how the points work, just to give us that overview. I think she would be super helpful.
I don't know if anyone cares. I personally was not able to attend the meeting.
On the moratorium. It was very good.
The time that she did the presentation, I have watched that. And that gives you at least a high level overview that you might want to watch before we have her.
We were there.
Yeah, we, Maria and I were there and our attorney, Nick Bomonte, also gave a very good overview of pending litigation and, and what that could do. So it's, that would be a great thing to watch because it was very, I thought, understandable, digestible. And it gives you, but Sarah would be helpful just to give us, even if it's a one, one pager that says, this is how many units we have going forward. This is what we should plan on. All of that would be helpful.
Well, Dan, Dan and Chris are not going to be wild about this idea. I think something we have to explore is having Sarah attend our meetings. Because as I started to think about, we've done ten in all, I mean, Deanna, you just said it yourself. Probably the best repository of knowledge on affordable housing. So I know she's got 10 minutes to discuss, but.
I would add Scott Hobbs to that list as well. Yeah, yeah. So was there anything else, Hillary, that you wanted?
No, thank you.
And then meeting schedule too will be up to you guys. I mean, technically this is, this is, this is a committee that could meet like once, once, once a week. And still, still need to be complete more. But again, everybody's time is precious. So there's a lot of work to do. And I think you guys know it. We kind of warned you going in that this is, this is a top area, but it's going to take some time.
Everybody else?
There may be moments when questions pop up or we need advice from Town Council. Is, is, is that available to us to?
Absolutely. I think any board or commission, you know, board or staff member that you need to, you know, have at your disposal will, will make sure that we give that to you.
There will be no, I mean, I don't want to speak for Deanna, but in my opinion, there's no lack of resource with you guys. I mean, it's, but it's not, try to figure out a way to make it happen. We don't want to run up a multimillion dollar legal bill, but. And I know our town attorney is, is knows that we're doing this and they're ready to support you guys as well. So.
Should those requests come to you, Deanna, to then forward on or to you, Dan?
Once you elect officers.
Yeah.
Everything should go through the chair and then the chair can submit stuff to me. And, you know, I can go it up to Sarah or to whoever needs it. And, you know, as much as we can do pre-work before you get to the meeting, I think that's helpful. One, you know, it may limit how much Sarah has to be here because she does have, you know, I do want her to stay. So I don't want to overtax her evening schedule. So, but, but that said, if there's a meeting, you know, she needs to be here. You know, occasionally I'm sure she can be, be here, but if we can do some pre-planning and have some questions that she can prepare so that you have what you need to do the work in a meeting or in a subcommittee or whatever. I think that would be a better way to operate just from a town hall management. Cause she is really, she is really taxed with, as, as you know, John, very long meetings many times. So it's, it's, it's a big job for her. With that, are we ready to move on to Officer? So could I, we need to elect a chair and a secretary this evening. So if I could get a nomination for chair.
And chair has to be according to the ordinance, not a sitting board member, correct? So it has to be one of you athletes members. Right. Oh, sorry. Yeah, yeah. No, that, yeah, I think we wrote that into the ordinance.
So.
Um, I will make a nomination for John Goodwin to be the Chair of the Commission. I know we're all at a disadvantage this evening in the fact that we're just meeting each other for the first time. So it's kind of awkward to try and select a chair when, you know, we don't know each other, know each other's background and credentials. But I do know John. I've worked with him for five years on Planning and zoning Commission. And during that time, he was Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I think that that gives him a lot of insight into the work that we're going to do here. These folks sat in on 830G applications, sat in on moving Canaan Parish and Milcourt. Sure to probably dodge some 830G applications that didn't come to us. And he's kind of seen the whole gamut at least of how it comes to the town. And also I think he has great experience being the Chair of Planning and Zoning Commission, which for those of you who have a couple of pleasure every time in our meetings can be quite long, quite contentious. I feel like you can share that. You can share most anything at Planning and Zoning Commission. I always found John to be very diplomatic in his style. Open to everybody. He's really there to build consensus and facilitate the group moving forward. I also really appreciate about John that he's a great listener. Doesn't often come with his mind made up and wants to hear not only what the commission has to say to the committee, but also the members of the public. And I think since we have so much learning to do together, that that would be a great service. And then last but not least, he's just always prepared. He does his homework. He processes his tasks as well. That's also a great as a chair. Do I have any?
Oh, wait, I don't need to see it.
Okay. Do we have any other nomination for Chair?
There's a reason why you shouldn't do it.
Bad bad job.
In terms of, not so much in person, but you know, what, what do you think we're trying to accomplish here? Overall objective, which I believe is, you know, it should all come to just an open mind with you. I don't know if people either, but at the same time, it's both positive and negative.
Yeah. I mean, I guess, I don't know that John's probably, I don't know which of us is the most knowledgeable on 830G. I mean, each of us comes with a different perspective. I don't know if John has the most knowledge, but I also think that's almost an advantage in being a chair is that you don't have, you know, all the knowledge. So therefore you really are open to what the group is trying to.
Do we have any other nominations for Chair? I'm trying to make sure that I see Jeff back there. Okay. So seeing no other nominations, all those in favor of John Goodwin for Chair?
I.
And it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to nominations for Secretary. If I have any nominations for Secretary.
Good luck with you guys up there down the floor.
Can I just ask a question? I mean, I don't have a nomination, but coming from Planning and zoning, we have a woman who comes and like does our even minutes and everything for us. Was the Secretary on this committee responsible for writing and submitting this? What, what's the responsibility of the Secretary on this?
So I think that will have to come to, we haven't formed anything with this committee. If you need secretarial assistance, then we can work with, you know, whoever is, you know, it's like Utilities Commission. Nothing was formed before you were formed and you had a, a group that was functioning and then they came to us with what they needed. So you need to form your group, figure out what your needs are, and then come to us and say, what do I need?
Okay. I just wondered if this individual needs to know they're responsible for taking the notes and keeping them in us.
Yeah. No, I mean, they'll have to obviously, there's submission. Yeah, but yeah. So do I have any nominations for the Office of Secretary?
I can't, right?
Who wants it?
Who wants to talk to the Secretary? I'm willing to nominate.
I'm willing. How about the others?
That's awesome.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? All right. Thank you all. I know it's a big job. So. And I report to love to be available and working with you because I think that there'll be a lot of coordination that my office and Town Hall and Selecting Board. So anyways.
Can you speak for a minute about the fact that we're supposed to have the five parts of the structure of this certain issue? Because there probably isn't any other issue in town as like, like this is not even an issue to ever disagree. So just take a second. Cause that's, I think that's important.
I think you kind of said it, but, but yeah, I mean, you know, this board is very obviously evenly distributed. We're all, you know, this is one of those issues that I think both Republicans and Democrats and all affiliates can come together and say, you know, that we want to be able to control our destiny here. And I think that's what this committee is all about, controlling our destiny in this town. And so I think, you know, I, I had lots of support. You know, I think both Amy and I on the campaign trail, this was our biggest issue. Didn't, so, you know, didn't really matter where you came from. This was the biggest issue in town. It's, it is, it is the issue that, you know, given what's happened locally can completely transform the way this town looks. And I don't think anyone in this community wants that to happen. So, you know, if we develop and control it, we can make sure that we keep it in keeping with the way we want this town to develop and grow. Because, you know, at some level, we only have so much infrastructure in here. We can't change. You know, we, we unfortunately are a lot like Darien or Westport. We don't have 95 or the Post Road where they're big wide roads and, you know, you can, you can put big things there and kind of absorb the, the, the extra units. We have the infrastructure. We have the roads. We have, we have, and, and everybody. I mean, I've lived in this town 27 years and I said this when I was talking to, I can't remember. It was a P and Z meeting. It was a P and Z meeting that was there. Cause I think you were there for stuff. Where I talked about, we, we, everyone that's been here a long time feels the added density that we have here. And it's not just the housing, it's the cars. It's the, and so we have to be so mindful of what we have and not to, you know, overburden our streets and, you know, infrastructure to the point where people, you know, people move here. People don't move here to have an urban setting. They just don't. They move here to get out of an urban setting. And so I would like you to be mindful that we don't want, you know, people move out of New York City for a reason. They moved here for a reason and we want to keep that feel that people moved out of New York City for. So that's it. So thank you guys again.
Thank you.
Deanna, Steve, thank you very much. Really appreciate it. Krista, you've set the bar way too high. It's now an impossible task, but, but thank you for your kind remarks. This, this is a really hard job for us. If anybody wants to get really depressed, go to Elm and have a beer with Scott Hobbs. Scott, you and I have done that too many times and I go onto my wife and mom depressed and well, I just spent time with Scott talking about affordable housing. So it's a big job. Yeah. I have looked at the background of everybody on this committee. And, and the good news, in my opinion, is these backgrounds are really, really strong. I think this is, you know, this is a very good fit to what we have to try to achieve. I think, you know, Hillary, what you did with Tom and putting together the ordinance was very well thought out. I actually had different thoughts. I had an ongoing conversation, particularly with Tom as he went through the process. And frankly, my thoughts were off. I thought, I thought you guys really nailed it in terms of what you wanted to. So we have a sense of what our mission is. The, what, what I try to do and Krista touched on this is as Chair, a couple of priorities from maybe his first consensus. You don't always achieve consensus, but, you know, I think we want to strive for that. We don't always have to have it, but that's something that I'll always be thinking about. Second thing I'll always be thinking about is how, how do we move things forward? Yeah. I think as a committee, it's been talked well enough about four years will go by very quickly. And, you know, the key one thing four years to a CO, not, you know, shovels in the ground or anything like that. So I'll focus on moving everything forward. I also put a lot of time into trying to minimize waste of time. And I think that's very, very important. And so, you know, as Chair, I think it's part of my responsibility to, you know, put through things, definitely stuff. And then, and then the last thing is, you know, look, I think VCVs are better than my CVs. So, you know, I'm always open to, I'm going to try to direct ones, move things forward, but always feel free to, you know, voice, you know, if you think things evolve or life, please let me know. Maybe what we do is we've, we've got, what I'm thinking is, is the schedule we have tonight. We just, we've covered items one, two, and three. We've got the meeting schedule. So I guess we have to vote on that, right? And then we'll take public comments per the schedule. And then I think for us, the most important part of the night will be number six, which is the meeting objective. And I have a couple of ideas about how we talk about that. And I'm going to be a little bit liberal in terms of, you know, where we go in terms of that, that objective. But first, has everybody reviewed the meeting schedule? Right now it's the first Monday of every month. The question is in November, it's on Veterans Day.
Second month.
Second, second Monday.
Second Monday, sorry.
And November is Veterans Day outside.
Yeah. Are we, is town hall open on Veterans Day?
School, yeah. Schools are open, yeah.
Okay. And then as Steve alluded to, we can, oh. And then as Steve alluded to, we can always, um, you know, we can always add special meetings if we're getting particularly busy and need to get after things. But is everybody comfortable for second Monday of every month?
Works, yes.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the schedule for two thousand forty-four?
So moved.
Great, okay, all those in favor?
All right.
Great, thank you. Next item is public comments. Members of the public are welcome to provide comments. The Affordable Housing Committee on Agenda Topics Schedule for Review and or Vote. Comments limited to two minutes per speaker. Would anyone in the room like to speak to the committee? And by the way, I'll probably say commissioners a lot. I realize we're not commissioners, so. But it's, it's seventeen years of habit. Anyway, what's seventeen?
I drafted the ordinance and I'm always like, committee or committee?
Would anybody in the room like to provide some remarks to the Affordable Housing Committee? Okay, seeing, uh, Chairman Radman. This is gonna be great, I'm really gonna love showing band down here.
You are, you'll get two and a half minutes. First of all, thank you for being on this, on this committee. I think it's an incredibly important effort that you're going to be putting in here. And I'm hoping it dovetails with all of the important work we've been doing on P and Z. As many of you know, we're currently engaged in redoing our P O C D, our Plan of Conservation and Development. That's due at the end of this year. We've already been through a number of town halls, town meetings, drafts of the P O C D, all with the goal that we're going to try and publish it and make it formal by end of third quarter, beginning of fourth quarter of this year, somewhere, but definitely by the end of the year. Ideally, we'd like to try and get some input from your committee before, um, would love to build, be able to build into the B O C D that forth off of the next ten years. It might not be concrete definitive maps or zones or specific recommendations. Could be forty thousand foot level recommendations from your part for the next, you know, three to six months of what you'll be working on. But in terms of potential goals of what you want to see in the next three, six, nine months, ideally, if we could see something from this committee by, say, September, that would be ideal in terms of trying to fold that into what would, or even before September, if you could get to it. But ideal in terms of folding it into what P O C D we will publish. That will be our guideline for the next ten years for on the zoning side. All of that will be working in conjunction with what you guys develop as a committee for goals and outlooks for the affordable housing structure in town. You know, something in, in zoning, we are always confronted by applications that, that are looking to stretch and relieve certain regulations in town, depending on the lot, depending on the size of the project. Everything from, you know, I want a two-family on a one-family lot to larger developments. And as the first selectman specifically said, we want to control our own destiny here. So we'd like recommendations that will help us structure, not only inform the P O C D, but help us structure the next iteration of the zoning guidelines for the town, which is next on the list for us for twenty twenty-five. Um, and part of that will be the zoning map. I would expect that the zoning map will have some change to it based on your efforts and your conclusions. So, uh, there's a lot to do. I think we're at a pivotal time in this town that the next year to two years of decision-making and guidelines for this, this effort are going to be very critical for the future of this town and look forward to working with it.
Well, just a procedural question again, you know, I can stay on the novice in this for a while. Let's just say for a point of reference that what you're talking about producing in the September time frame, that we can't provide input until January.
That's okay.
And will you hold off on what you're doing to?
No, we cannot, we're mandated by the state to say the year. But what we'll do is we'll, we'll structure the P O C D, the, let's call it the chapter on affordable housing. We can structure that and then word it in such a way that it will have a future reference to whatever the outline of this committee is.
So maybe that raises two questions. One, are there any other groups of town that are doing things similar, you know, that from an input standpoint that we want to sort of pace and understand? Yeah, you know, first of all, the selectmen can help us with that. And then, um, I guess we have a deadline, you know?
Yeah, exactly.
The other thing I would throw on in terms of similar thing, I also have some around planning and zoning commission, just to introduce myself, is that every five years, as it stands right now, we have to produce what's called an A thirty G plan, which is an affordable housing plan for this town. So our last one was done last May.
You're, yeah.
You're, so anyway, twenty twenty-seven, I guess we'll have to have another one. But obviously, hopefully by twenty twenty-seven, we've worked together long enough that we have some good direction that we can work on that together, but.
Anybody, I'm sorry, Dan, anybody else with that? Dan, I have a question. I was, I was going to bring this up later and I was going to ask Krista, but I'll ask you. Is the flip side is S L R? And, and one of the things I'm going to talk to the committee about tonight is potentially our, our next meeting being a listening session. Or, or sorry, not an education session. And, you know, Bill, you're making the right point. We need to come up to speed on education. I didn't mean listening, listening is public input, which we'll always take, of course, but we need to get educated. And, you know, one of the things I was thinking was, could S L R be helpful in that respect? Because, you know, they've done P O C Ds all over the state of Connecticut. And so, um, I'm wondering if they have some expertise in affordable housing and could address us at that point. So I'm going to flip it back your way to, I mean, that guy. Oh, I'm sorry, that's it. So Dan, tell us who S L R is.
S L R, they're, they're the consultant that we hired to help us put together the P O C D. It's a percolating effort to create this document. It's, you know, two, three hundred pages long. It's, it's above and beyond what our town planner or anyone in town can put together. So, um, they've been helping us since September, August, September of last year, with the deadline of producing a document by the end of this year. They, we interviewed a number of firms, we felt they were the strongest, they're based here in Connecticut. They've done a number of P O C Ds for various towns across the state, are very familiar with the regulations that govern this state, specifically affordable housing. Um, I'm sure they would be more than willing to help or do an information session, but if it was necessary, we could definitely reach out to them. Sarah's, Sarah knows them very well and has been very closely with them.
Have you gotten into the affordable housing subject with them?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I don't know personally how deep their knowledge goes on that. S L R in general is more environmental, I think, type term of, obviously, planning, right? So, I mean, they may have a deep foundation, I'm just not aware of, but we have to really bridge the subject with that, yeah. So there's also a chance.
Maybe we can chat with them.
Yeah, we should talk to Sarah, ask Sarah kind of probe what their skill set is, whether that's something to help us with or not. Just may not be. Real fast.
Yeah, okay. Anybody else for Dan?
It's one more question. The plan you're putting together or the plan we have now, are there restrictions in terms of what we can do as a committee? What we can do as a town, as to where we would like to put a affordable housing project? And then second of all, do we have, does the town have an option? And has the town ever employed an option of eminent domain?
To your second question, I don't know. That would be something we'd have to see what's happened in the past with the planner, the first elector, Steve, if you're familiar with.
Sure, the town has put eminent domain, or something, we make the Cherry Street extension in the sixties. I'm sure that was eminent domain. I don't know if we've ever employed eminent domain for, I don't, for housing.
No.
Yeah, not anytime.
Yeah, I guess, legally, could we, you know, well, go into court in twenty-five years, you know?
Yeah. First question, as a plan, zoning commission, what guides us to zoning regulation of the zoning map? So we have over the last few years, we've amended the zoning regulation and the map to include different iterations and different coverages of the business zone or the commercial zone in town. Like we modified the Viddy Street cross street area five years ago, four years ago.
Yeah.
Something like that. So we have amended those, but those are our guidelines as far as affordable housing specifically, other than the, the zones that identify density, because that's what we're concerned with, is the density on the map. We have not mapped out an affordable housing zone. We have, there was a effort, and John, you might know about this, um, probably at least five years ago, maybe more, I think it was during the Kleppin days, there was an analysis done. I don't think it was formalized or finished, nor was it distributed, but looking at the Grove Street area, the Acme, all of that in terms of the redevelopment of that area into housing and commercial base and everything else, taking an opportunity of large plots of land central to town and how to redevelop those. So there's a little bit of precedent there and probably dig that up, but I don't think that was ever fully finalized.
To further answer your question, I think that whatever this group comes up with, you know, we've got consensus among ourselves with the town officials, with the public on a location and a project, that we'll probably have to do a reset.
Yeah.
That process to make it knowledgeable. I don't think you're gonna look at our zoning map and find a place for it. I think we're gonna have to create what we want to see.
And it would need to be on the town sewer and water within that.
It would have.
Within that circle, so to speak.
I mean, you can, you can do larger density housing on septic, but you need a substantial amount of land to do that.
Okay.
So, but to that point, technically, does an A thirty G project have to be on the town?
No.
I don't think so, yeah.
Right, not under.
So conceivably.
As long as they can show they have appropriate.
The ability to support the.
Yeah.
Except it doesn't necessarily mean septic like I have in my house, which is a tank. I mean, septic can mean, you know, a plant that costs a place, I assume.
Not necessarily a plant, but a very larger, much larger version of what you have in your house.
It's only a matter of how much land you have.
Yeah.
Is one of our schools on septic or do they have a well? Is it, I, it doesn't, West School have one or the other? They're connected, I think, to town water, but they have a septic system.
That might be the case.
Yeah, or it's, it's one way or the other, I, I think, right? Yeah.
They're all over, you know, lots of places in the world where they build wise developments and they have neither septic nor connected to town, but they have, I don't know what you'd call it, but a black water system. Yeah, and, and, and that water is, you know, deep, you know, so. We should leave online open, I guess the only point was, you know, from my standpoint, I think the board is the town, is something to look at. I'm not saying it's a good idea, I'm saying, you know, it's.
I, I remember one that's, I think it was maybe Zone D was proposed when Steve took the initiative on Grove Street. And it was a great effort. He did a ton of research on it, brought a lot of data to the meeting. But the, maybe the honest pointer, John said before, um, education was so important because I remember sitting there and the room was full, I think it might have been the old meeting room downstairs. And, uh, a lot of misinformation, not understanding, I think, what Steve was trying to accomplish. And I think it went by the by, then after that, I think it just fittered away after that first presentation. Maybe there was one more meeting after that, but it didn't go anywhere. So it was an honorable effort, but it went into a cul-de-sac. And I think that calls out education again.
And, and if, if you as committee man, committee persons, um, when we get to this point, if, if you agree your next step is to do an education session, I want, one of the people I potentially would want to include is Steve Kleppin. And for those of you who don't know Steve, who was the town planner for, I don't know, ten years or so. And he was very, very cool with it. And he proposed a lot of different ideas, of which some of them had to do with affordable housing. So I think he would be a good person to listen to. Any other questions for Dan?
I have one more thing to offer, um, just in terms of the learning process. I've been, uh, over the last year that I've been chairman at P and Z, I've been in touch with the other chairs of the adjoining towns. And specifically Greenwich has, has structured their affordable housing effort slightly differently, where they have an affordable housing trust. And way too much to get into in a single meeting like this. And I'm continuing to work with the chairperson down there as well as the people on, or, um, we're gonna have a meeting in the next couple of weeks, uh, just to get it down, it's, uh, understand how they've put it together, what their limitations are, what their structure are, because they operate outside of the P and Z. They're more of a, uh, they're more of a. Sorry.
Or governmental entity.
They're a government entity, but they're an advisory, uh, committee that works on, let's call it pre-applications with developers to try and mitigate and control the scale and size and density of what's being proposed. It's basically a barter system. And I can, I can put an email together to the committee here and tell you what we've learned. We'll be learning more on that. And there might come a time where it might be beneficial to have someone from Greenwich, uh, Affordable Housing Trust, possibly pay a visit here and tell you what they know.
I'm forgetting my friend who.
Margarita.
Margarita, yeah, is she on that?
She's not on trust, she's still part of P and Z.
Yeah.
But I think she helped draft language of the trust.
Right. Yeah, there's also a Darien Affordable Housing Trust. So they have it too.
And if I understand right, they also were, I guess, are personally buying down some of the market.
Yes. Yeah.
Yeah, I think we made that. Dan, will that be as part of P and Z meeting? Or will that be when you, when you have this meeting to better understand, uh, Greenwich?
I'm, I'm reaching out as P and Z chair, but it's, it's not necessarily part of the P and Z agenda per se.
Okay.
It will be a learning effort for P and Z, but I think it's, I, I was, I was just taking the initiative to try and help inform you guys.
Yeah, well, all I'm saying is if you put it on an agenda and as part of a meeting, let us know so we can watch.
Sure. Yeah, I can do that.
I know somebody on the Darien ones, I'll.
Excellent, yeah.
Great.
Some things you're thinking about the P O C D. I know that Stanford, I think they have a longer, you can go longer than that forty-year affordable. I think they have over ninety-nine year affordable setup in their P O, their, at least that's the way it's structured in Stanford. That might be something that we want to consider, because any of these market value units, after forty years, they disappear. And I think it's real important that we can, and which is why our effort is to keep a hundred percent affordable, because it's forever affordable. And so I think any efforts that we can to, to do a little research on that, to see if that would make sense for any comment.
It's, it's definitely more beneficial to try and put the project together as a hundred percent affordable, rather than piecemealing the, you know, certain towns do ten, fifteen percent Greenwich, tries to get to that number, thirty percent is the state regulation. You know the numbers better than I do. And you're gonna, you're gonna be fighting incredibly uphill battle to create the, the number of units you need to create to achieve the percentage of affordable housing that you're mandated to create by the state will destroy this town.
How many units is that?
Oh, boy, um, I think in order to.
To hit ten percent?
No, to get, to get to the ten percent, there's, we needed to.
Seven thousand five hundred.
It was around seven thousand units, I think.
That we need, and what do we have?
Yeah.
Four point.
Five hundred plus affordable, right? So five hundred plus affordable, at thirty percent, you're gonna be building two and a half thousand units, something like that.
A lot of.
It's a lot of units, yeah. Considering the town right now has, how many, seven and a half thousand dwelling units or housing units? So, and we don't have the money for that.
And the reality is fair share, which they're, phase one is past of, uh, we're waiting to see what the reports are going to be from the state, but that's coming out in December and that's sort of hinting at like a twenty percent number. It's, yeah.
But our goal is to meet the moratorium. That's the, that's the, that's the strategy and.
In the organizing documents that you have.
Yeah, yeah, I think in, in our town, that makes sense to be our goal.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else in the room? Scott, please.
I'll do the, the two-second version under this one.
Yeah, so that way I don't go home depressed, Scott.
I have to say, it's definitely better done over drinks, there's no more.
I literally split.
I mean, first off, thank you everyone for, for serving on this. It's a, I, I had some reservations initially about this commission, but after thinking it through relatively quickly, it was one of those things that the town needs a huge education effort. When you talk about affordable housing, it's a category this huge. When you talk about affordable housing, it's a category this humongous. And everyone, when you talk about it, they all agree that this has to happen, but they're all talking about different sections. Talking about those things is a huge point for the town. And there's gonna be a big competition between, you know, solving eight thirty G issues, which is a giant threat to the town. And then actually looking at real affordability issues, for which we get no credit, and we don't get the, you know, protection from that, but we do have affordability issues that do need to be addressed. The education part's great, creating some sort of consensus. I think a lot of people don't understand that inaction is a active choice. And if we don't do something, people are gonna enforce stuff on us. And looking toward timeline, I would also caution that, you know, there's several proposals in front of the town right now that those are gonna happen relatively quickly. We're gonna start getting court issues and, you know, things will be going active on that. And if the town doesn't act quickly, we'll have a answers imposed upon us. So whether or not this commission can actually function that quickly, who knows? But there is some stuff that's gonna happen quickly. And I guess like any crisis will actually, we won't let it go to waste and hopefully you guys can take that and use it to help do further education on things. There's a huge benefit, I think, toward the commission and that really, really the commission has to happen is when we select new sites for affordable housing for the town, the town becomes the evil developer. And unless we have a consensus where as an entire group, we say, this is what we're gonna be doing, and there's gonna be some winners and losers, and that's unfortunate, but this is what's gonna happen. Nothing will happen. Cause I mean, I personally, it shouldn't be me and, and, you know, Mike sitting on the commission going out there and planning a new development, springing it out of the town. It has to be a much more open process that gets, that lays the groundwork for then a real estate transaction, which will by nature be a little bit more opaque, because you don't wanna be obviously advertising your entire real estate transactions part of the whole world. But where those can take place, we need some guidance and help in order to decide what is a town we wanna do. I think that the planning boards all need to figure out a little bit as to how much money is gonna be involved. But affordable housing is really expensive and somebody has to pay for it. And getting those numbers in front of the town and as people say, we just ought to develop and make all this affordable housing. It's like, all right, well, do you want twenty, forty, hundred, two hundred million? What are we talking about over what timeframe? And getting those numbers out there so people really understand what's being asked of us. And maybe also some of the politicians will understand that there's gotta be a lot more funding available. Otherwise imposing this on small towns is really something that's not really fair. And then also a little bit on offense versus defense. Offense being that we can go out and actually build affordable housing. Defense is how do we prevent people from being able to build, or sorry, submit even eight thirty G applications by taking land out of play? There's a lot of parcels out there that could possibly be eight thirty G parcels. And if we're able to identify some of those and get certain rights over them, or if we're able to actually buy them and inventory them or rent them or do other things, those are things we can do actively behind the scenes, or not behind the scenes, but we can actively just hopefully find some ways in order to do that to prevent again, more eight thirty G applications coming up. Those are a couple of things. I'm sure I'll be here again and there'll be a lot's going on. Please, I'm here as a resource. Always feel free to reach out and happy to discuss stuff and Mike will keep you filled in and he'll badger me behind the scenes too.
Do we have a, a, a one pager information available about the costs associated with, for instance, developing Canaan Parish? Like, eh, something like that would, just to get, wrap our minds around as we think about funding sources and, and, and what we need in the bank to, if we wanted to land bank or something, it would be great just to, cause I don't feel like I have a real grasp of how much Canaan Parish was from start to finish.
I, I've done, I, I've done a couple of pro formas. I'm happy to provide those out there. And Chris probably knows a lot more than I do under a lot of this stuff and can provide things. In very, very, very loose rule of thumb, six hundred thousand dollars per unit. Plus land is your cost.
Okay.
And then for rents, and again, this is that there's, there's so much detail and there's so many things, but for rents, if you were to nominally say, and a, a unit rents for fifteen hundred dollars a month, of which you have to pay eight hundred dollars a month for maintenance and upkeep. So you're left with seven hundred thou, uh, seven hundred bucks a month. Now, one more layer of complexity and then complexity, and then we'll get on the performers later on, but there are the thirty percent or the four percent tax credits.
Okay.
Which effectively provide thirty percent of hard costs, not including, or sorry, costs, not including land. So out of that six hundred thousand dollars, you'll be provided two hundred thousand dollars. But meanwhile, to make this actually function, you know, you gotta make, somehow figure out how called seven hundred dollars times twelve, so we end up with eighty four hundred dollars can support four hundred thousand dollars worth of, worth of building costs. And doing that math, the answer is it doesn't. And basically, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of one fifty to three hundred, depending on interest rates and costs and all that, is what needs to be provided per unit.
Per unit.
You mean as a subsidy?
And, and having done, for quick history, Chuck Berman, who's an amazing guy and a total genius, did the first affordable housing project and nobody understood what was going on. Chuck's a very forceful personality. And the number of times I went in and told him, there's no possibility that'll work. It was just go with me. And everyone did it. And I was just shocked and amazed. And then we built a house for Chuck over in, in Darien. And I became chairman. And that's when people started showing up going, you know, about what she did. And we had to unwind a lot of the stuff and, and it was, and even to begin with, it was nip and tuck. I mean, it was a pro forma that was down to a razor's edge. And it's taken us twelve, thirteen years to get it back to the point where, you know, we're not checking the couch cushions every single week in order to find money to pay for needed expenses. Can Parish is entirely different because it was sectioned vouchers for sixty percent of them. So essentially Canan Parish is sixty percent market rate. It's quote market rate.
Right.
Uh, which covers a lot of sins and makes it not a lot of sins. It allows for an amazing project and much more fun one.
Thank you.
Is, the number you talked about, the six hundred, two hundred, fifteen hundred dollars, is that cannibalizing the rental market for, you know, a lot of houses in town which are just rented by individuals, right? Um, I mean, people in business, right? Is, is that short term and long term cannibalizing what they can get for rents because more and more coming in at lower cost?
There, there's actually, so this is part of the genius of, of when the government gets involved in deciding what the economics should be, we have a hard time keeping Millport full. It's a hard, it's hard to find enough people who earn in this tiny little window between like fifty to sixty thousand dollars a year who want to live there, who don't have other expenses under something that want to live there and fill it. So we actually have a hard time filling Millport. We do, but just barely. And there's almost always a, you know, at least one or two vacancies and a couple.
We advertise.
And we advertise and we push hard. So there's a question that, you know, if we produced another five hundred units of sixty percent affordable housing, a lot of them sit vacant. At which, but then they penalize you and they take it away from you. It doesn't count anything. So there, there's, there's creating that mix of all the different types of units becomes important. And again, this makes it more tricky to make this happen. For the, for the nat, for the naturally occurring low income housing, for those who don't know, none of that counts toward eight thirty G. So unless it's deeded, it doesn't count. And the answer is, yeah. I mean, because quite frankly, where would we find the land to do affordable housing? Well, let's buy up the naturally affordable housing and turn it into deeded affordable housing. Great. So we've done nothing in order to really help the situation, but I've created even the board. Like I said, the great course.
I understand.
Now, now you get it.
I don't want to go too far in the weeds here, but the nine percent tax credits, is that something that's ever available to a town like New Canaan, or is it the way it's prescriptive? We can't really get them?
Technically, we've only applied twice. So I don't know what is possible or not possible. Um, getting the nine percent tax credits, which of course would then get you up to, I think, like seventy percent of, of, of the equity. They're out there. You have to have an amazing application. And it's a competitive pool, so you're up against other applications. And not surprisingly, Ucanan is not very sympathetic versus many other communities. So I mean, again, theory is there, there's nothing preventing us from getting it. Um, people in the know say it would be very, very, very difficult to do so.
And then the other issue is we don't give project vouchers, correct? That's the other problem, is that the state was less likely to give Ucanan vouchers that would reduce the cost and allow.
Well, and, and, and the voucher system is set up, is, it currently set up is broken. What would be good is if we give vouchers to people according to their needs in order to find what they want. But of course, instead they give vouchers only under very certain circumstances to very certain people and. And it's, it's tough.
Do we have an idea just quickly about the demand? And, and I know you said that Millport is, we have trouble filling, but do we have an idea as, as of right now? Like, are two bedrooms in demand or one bedroom street? Like, what is the demand in town where there is one?
It, it's, our, our multi fan, our multi bedroom units are typically always full and will have a waitlist and they're much easier to fill. That's six hundred thousand. And again, I haven't done the math under this one, but you're adding extra square footage to that, so it'll probably cost more.
Yeah.
Those, by definition and affordable, those will have kids in. So you are gonna have more density and more pull on the resources of the town. But I, I would definitely say that the multi bedroom is, is more, is much more.
Uh, both of you have mentioned the communicating to the town and experiences when it hasn't gone well and people haven't brought along. Do you have examples that we might look at of times when it's been done well?
Um, I I always remember the, the episode of The Simpsons where Mayor Quimby goes ahead and tells the people and the people yell and scream at him. And then a little bit later, he comes back in and he tells the people exactly what they wanted to hear. And they yell at him because they changed their minds and he calls them all a bunch of fickle mushettes. And they go, he's right. And, and I think the problem is that people, unless they're actively engaged, they don't listen. Everyone's busy, everyone's doing stuff. You don't pay attention. I think we've all sat on boards where we've gone through thirty meetings, thirty public meetings over two years and advertising and put everything out and do this. And then you get to like the last step and fifty people show up and accuse you of having done this in, in secret and creating all sorts of conspiracies. So it, it's, it's a tough one. I, I don't know if anyone's done this exceptionally well. I do think right now there is far more people are likely paying attention to this than there has been in the past. Um, so maybe there's hope, but I don't know if you guys have any example.
You know, I just wanted to mention as, it should be the first issue of my first election letter will be going out at the end of the month. And I would open that up to this committee. I mean, I'm hoping to get up to any, you know, boards and commissions that want to reach, you know, residents to, you know, say what, say what they wanna say in there. And I think, you know, we have a pretty good list. We're using our Evergrid system and, you know, so hopefully over time, we're, we'll get more and more people who will subscribe and, and you'll have it. So I would open that up to this committee.
No, for myself, I'm a debuster. I'm certainly being guilty of the exact same action myself, though. Although I've never, ever compared, I've never called anyone under a conspiracy or trying to be corrupt.
Well, there's still time. Yeah. We're ready.
Yeah. And I, look, I also think that the fact that we have now an organized effort around it, it's going to be on a sustained basis, higher profile. Then we have our friends like Mike Diamond, who are going to be putting it out there in the Sentinel and, you know, that's critical piece of the puzzle too. Any other questions, Scott?
There's just one other comment. The, uh, when you and I were speaking about sort of a back of an envelope, you know, bullet point description on how a unit is built, I think the thing that jumped out at me was I get lost in the weeds, I get confused over how the points are calculated, you know, for the moratorium. But just as a rough ru, rule of thumb, were we talking sixty, seventy units, somewhere in that ballpark?
Somewhere between sixty and seventy per moratorium. Uh, you know, I think it's like sixty two if you're in, mostly sixty, close, close sixty and seventy. And that depends upon whether or not you're eighty percent, sixty percent, forty percent affordable for the units. But if you were to say rule of thumb, sixty two, you're probably pretty close.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
No.
Anybody else in the room? Okay, any, Bob, anybody in Zoom line? Okay, great. Okay. Um, thank you. Uh, we will go to item six, committee objectives. To start, I thought it'd be good to just give a quick each of our backgrounds, because some of us know each other and some of us don't know each other. So just I'll, I'll start. Uh, my day job is I'm in the investment business. More relevantly, uh, came to New Canaan in nineteen ninety six, I joined planning and zoning in two thousand six. Was on the commission till then. About five, six, well, about six, seven years ago now, if you can't chair at the Laszlo Pat. And was chair. And then in addition to that, I also sat on the town hall building committee. Um, and then during the crisis of away, probably nobody remembers this, but we actually had something called the market demand study, which Tucker, Tucker Murphy made me chair. I'm never forgiven her for that. So that's my background. Jeff, you're on Zoom. Why don't we go to you?
Okay, uh, well, uh, thank you, John. I'm educated as investment, I'm educated as an architect. Never practiced. I was an investment banker for thirty some years. Always been involved in housing matters, both personal and institutional. Here in New Canaan, I was the original building committee chair for the library and termed off that and watched everybody do great work in making it work. John may remember this because I think he was on the P and Z. We were also instrumental, there were two of us who were instrumental in working with Silver Hill to limit their expansion, but at the same time give them development capabilities with, within their footprint. Uh, for the last four years, I've been on the foundation board and I'm currently the chairman. I'll, I'll term off from that in June.
Thank you, Jeff. Jay?
Uh, I grew up here. Our grandson, who's now in the preschool program at the nature center, is the fourth generation of our family. So I'm a lifer. I have to say right off the bat that I am sure I know less than everyone in St. about this topic, which I was very honest about. And I'm pretty good at listening. I've worked in both media and education stuff my whole life and have gotten involved in a whole lot of nonprofits, but never involved in a town project like this. Um, my father chaired the board of Ed here. My mother was very involved too. I'm very happy to be doing this, even though I know it's gonna be very hard. It's something I care deeply about, having seen the town change a lot. And I am not against change in any way. There are things that I get nostalgic about, things that I'm so glad have changed and I'm looking forward to working hard with all of you, learning a lot and making a difference.
Hillary?
Hillary Ormond. I moved to town this June. It'll be ten years ago with a, a nine month old and now I have two children that are eleven and seven, Krista and our kids went to preschool together at toddler time. Um, I, before I became a mom, I was a litigator at a New York firm that did strictly litigation and I did a lot of public interest, uh, legal work during law school. Um, and I lived in New York for fifteen years before moving here. And I've been on town council now for two years. I said after my youngest started kindergarten, I was gonna run for something, so I did. And it's been great. Um, and I'm really looking forward to, I'm very passionate about this and I, I think we can come up with something that's gonna be great for the town.
Thank you, Mike.
Uh, Mike Sweeney, I'm the designated from the housing authority. Lived in town for, gee, about twenty six, twenty seven years now. Uh, four kids gone through, gone through the school system. Share everything that's been said so far. It's a great town. For every difficult person, I think I've met in town over the years, there's ten really dedicated, bright, smart people. They're trying to help and do things for the right reason. I've always found New Canaan to be forward thinking. Um, and it's, it's not the typical, well, what people think is the typical small town that says note everything and says stop and never surrender. It's, New Canaan's never been that way. I, I know Chris, I know John. Um, I'm a real estate lawyer. I'm a, with a firm, uh, in Stanford office. Uh, do mostly real estate, some land use and uh, going to the comment to someone maybe before about being bipartisan. I don't think I've appeared before a committee or a commission in this town that could tell you who the, uh, what party someone belonged to. Uh, they, they call it be Bull Moose Party, members for all I knew. It's a, and that speaks to the people in this town and the spirit of volunteerism, trying to do things for the right reason. So, um, it's from that point of departure that I'm happy to join each of, each of you.
Thank you. Well.
So, I had a count, but I'm an accountant, so therefore I think I got it right. But I've been in town almost forty five years. We moved into town in nineteen eighty one, my wife and I. On one way or another, raised six children in town and we have a number of grandchildren, six of them are residents of the town, one former and other. I served on the audit committee of the town for about nine years. I was a partner at the Lloyd. Over forty years, but mandatory retirement. I've married for a long time as well. I guess my wife. Married for a long time as well. I guess my wife, if she's listening, would want me to tell you quite a lot. Probably worried before we moved to town, let's put it that way. And um, but uh, you know. Like others, I've um, I it's a great town to live in and. Um, I think I can offer a little bit in terms of understanding detail. I've been involved in a lot of construction projects, so. And also I've um have an opportunity today to work with a pretty big um private equity firm that understands how projects are financed and. You know, how you build projects and uh also they do a lot of managing of. Housing units and uh different types of housing throughout the United States and so on. So learn a little bit from them, bring a little bit back here. But but um, we have to come up on the learning curve and um. I was disappointed that I couldn't be chairman because the salary is so high.
They'll probably in about two months, I'll be begging you to take it.
Then reach over, ask if Scott buys the beers or you gotta buy the beers, Scott. But no, I'm happy to be here. I'll get inside, look forward to working and using whatever skills I have to be helpful.
Right, Maria?
Um, Ray One Garden. I lived here twenty years, raised our rich kids here. My oldest is two and my first one two. So um, uh, I'm a Realtor with uh Loma Rivas and I also have an accounting background. I worked at Press Warehouse. And uh I've spent a lot of time volunteering in town, um. Whether it was newcomers or PTC, Saks or. All the different schools. And uh so I've been pretty involved in schools for a long time in 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 the town and I'm on the Board of Finance currently. So um, I I also on the side, as a side gig, I'm involved with C two one six nine strong, where we look at zoning and housing policy statewide. So we analyze all the bills that are coming through and understand what's in them and we share that information with the public because. A lot of times the moves the press are not, are pretty remiss in explaining what's in the bills. So I take a deep dive on all that. So I, as you probably tell, I've taken a lot of interest in. Understanding how it's built, the cost of building and why it's so challenging in our state to make sure that. We all have the housing we need for the people who need it. So that's why I'm passionate about this. I spent a lot of time thinking about it and I'm just really happy to be on this panel.
Thank you, Chris.
Um, I've been here for fifteen years. Uh, I'm an accountant by training, but I've been in real estate, uh, mostly commercial real estate. For about twenty-five years. Um, I work as a uh lender. Uh, we do a lot of development finance, including some affordable housing development finance in Ireland. Um, not uh that relevant uh to what we're doing, but uh I have a deep background on. Uh, understanding development, building and and. Um, I hope to put that to work. I think, you know, as Deanna said, this is uh, we have an important four years. We've got to deliver. So the pressure's on this committee. Uh, I think there's some interesting things we could think about. On a longer term basis on how to um make uh our affordable housing work better, but in the short term, we have to figure out. How we're going to build the units we need to build, where they're going to get.
Thank you.
That's the focus.
Krista?
I'm Krista Nielsen. I'm the planning and zoning official. I have a master's degree in urban planning. I've worked as a planner in other municipalities. And my last job before I moved here eleven years ago was working in City of New Orleans. But when I was doing that, I was also part of a fellowship program that was largely focused on. Building affordable housing in the city of New Orleans. There's so much affordable housing lost because the population there is largely poverty line. That wasn't really my focus, but I'll do it to a lot of facets, so. Remember some of the things I learned. Show them with the script, but.
Great, thank you. Um, next thing I wanted to touch on just very quickly, it's FOIA. Uh, probably everybody's familiar with it, um, but the way I think about it is sort of the bottom line is all of our communications have to be here. Um, and Deanna mentioned this is the best way. Um, if you, you know, the best way for us to funnel that through and communicate onward will be with Chris and myself as as chair. I always say vice chair, I don't like the terms I regret. Um, but just be very attentive to that. I I have unfortunately had to attend FOIA hearings and they are not enjoyable. And what happens is, you know, there's good uses of the freedom of information. Um, when, you know, people want to find out information, Mike can tell you all about this. But there's also negative uses of the freedom of information. And I could see ourselves potentially in a situation where we're talking about a project. Somebody doesn't like that project. They'll do a FOIA and it basically what emerges that we have been communicating, you know. Outside of this room, so it's a, it will be problematic. So. And let's just be very attentive. I think Deanna was about to chip in.
I did, because this is a, I feel like you deal with this too often. Um, so probably the most effective way for you to communicate, you can always. Ask a question. A few of you on the board here already know this and are dealing with it, but um, you can ask a question to the group. No one can respond. So if, you know, if you have a comment or a question, as long as no one responds, that's a, that's okay. Um, but send it to the chair and everybody can be copied and that's fine. Just nobody, nobody respond to it. Um, and that way you all heard the question, but you're not having a discussion about it and then you can talk about it and. Uh, so I'm I'm really careful about that. I had this on the Board of Ed a lot too. So um, it's just, it's very important that you don't communicate outside of this group.
Is the FOIA presentation that we recently had on the town website?
Yes.
Okay, great.
For those of you who didn't see it, um, we had Nick Bomati here and Ira Bloom and they gave a a good update on, you know, how you can communicate as a board. So I would encourage all of you, if you don't, aren't familiar with it, um, to go to go view it, so.
Thank you, Deanna. Um, we we've been talking about it, but the next thing I thought would be worthwhile to do is just walk through the ordinance. Has everybody read the ordinance?
Yeah.
I mean, I I have copies here.
I have a copy.
Yeah, that's all over. I'm gonna pass them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we're good, yeah.
It should be. So the first, the first page we can, in my opinion, unless somebody wants to talk about it, we can skip over. It's just basic logistics, board terms, et cetera, et cetera, but. You know, when I, when we think about it, okay, what's our mission? Here it is, my thing. Um, and it says the mission. Um. So looking at the second page, four, B dash three, the committee shall work with the Housing Authority of the Town of New Canaan and other town bodies to increase the number of affordable housing units in New Canaan. And to maintain local control of housing development. To achieve these purposes, the committee shall recommend a plan to maintain successive moratoria. Under subsection, I assume that's an L, of section eight thirty G of the Connecticut General Statutes. Um, B, the Affordable Housing Committee shall develop scenarios under which moratoria, under section eight thirty G of the Connecticut General Statutes, could be achieved and shall measure public support for each scenario. Each scenario so addressed the type of projects involved, whether they would utilize town property or require a land acquisition, the projected cost of development and maintenance of each project, the impact on infrastructure, likely sources of funding and the impact of. On taxpayers. Um, so I sort of think about, here's our mission and it it, you know, it's pretty clear. Um, one of the questions and and Hillary, um, feel free to comment on this, is one of the questions I had when I was talking to you and to Tom Buck Butterworth when they're, when you all were putting the ordinance together. Was, you know, how much latitude do we have for interpretation of the ordinance? And tell me if you agree or disagree. So don't say that. Feedback you told me when I talked to the committee was, you know, we we do have some latitude. I mean, what as. The, you know, a drafter of the ordinance, I mean, how do you think about that? What's your guidance to us?
I mean, obviously we have a set of priorities in here and eight thirty G is the most important one. There's a reason why we kept affordable housing units as, for instance, as lowercase, so that as. This committee evolves and we solve the eight thirty G. Issue, I'm confident in that. Um, it does give the committee then latitude to look at other forms of lowercase affordable housing units, like senior housing and and things like that, that. We might not get, you know, might not fit neatly under eight thirty G or or effectuate that goal, but that we still have a need for. Um, in the sort of lowercase sense, a more general. So we we deliberately used lowercase letters there.
Yeah.
Um, I, you know, I'm a lawyer, so I, like commas are important to me. So the, that is actually quite. Important and notable.
Yeah.
Um, so that it does keep the scope of this committee fairly.
So everybody sort of agrees, we're straightforward.
The quick question I had, I read this before, I'm not reading it correctly. What about costs? Other than construction costs, land costs and so on? What about? The fact that you double the population of this number of students in town and the cost of education?
I think that falls on impact on infrastructure. Um, and I would consider our ta- our schools. Um, and I think that that's an excellent point and something we thought about is sort of distributing it. Um, to the extent possible, so that, you know, maybe it feeds into all three elementary schools, for instance. Um, instead of impacting one, one individual school. Um, so yeah, I would say that would fall under.
I guess I was, but I was also thinking about just the absolute cost. I mean, it costs about. Twenty-two, twenty-two thousand, twenty-three thousand dollars to educate students. We multiply that times. The number of students we have, therefore it costs X dollars more. Um, I know that um, you know, real estate taxes for even a, even a. Yeah, condominium in town, if someone writes, there's a couple of costs of education. So how does that or does that enter into our discussion?
I think it's an important part of it and I think that it looks, that was sort of related to the question that I asked Mr. Hobbs is, is, you know, what kind of units is there a demand for? Um, what kind of impact would that have, I think, on the schools is important. Um, I do think that that twenty-two thousand number per student is, can be a little bit. Misleading in that as you add one more student, it's not like it, the expenses go up twenty-two thousand dollars. It's a marginal increase, really. So it it would spread out. You, maybe the jump would be if you add five students, maybe the jump would be, the average would go up by a thousand dollars or something. So it's not. Per student add, it adds this much um to the budget. So I think that that's an important. Um, and I would be curious, and I think this comes with the education session. If we look at Kane and Parish, how many families do we have there? What's the distribution of kids that we have there? I think once we get a handle, not only on demand, but actuals. It's um, that that can inform our decision a lot, because right now I don't know what the impact of, for instance, Kane and Parish is on East. And I know Avalon feeds into East, although that's not affordable anymore.
I mean, you have two things, you know, facility cost.
Yeah.
Repair and maintenance cost, but then also just the absolute cost. Okay, you're right, one, one student probably marginal. But. Some of it is added buses, different things, it probably becomes a big cost. And I just personally, I think it's important for some to stand and. And not try to minimize what the cost is, but really understand the cost, because that gets into budgeting and with town infrastructure and. So on and so on. So that's a lot of work.
You know, the other thing that should probably be, well, you should be taking into account, because it's coming up in this budget cycle. Is the impact that Kane and Parish in the quarter are having on our health improvement services. Um, days and usage of services um in this, um, they've really spiked in the last uh two years. Come on, so I think, not, don't forget that those are additional costs that are going to incur as you add one.
Do we have an idea of how many? Additional residents we, because Kane and Parish was there before, obviously, and we replaced it. So. How, eh eh, some idea of the number of additional residents that there are as a result of that? Yeah, that would be, I'd be curious. Yeah, no, of course. Yeah.
Why are you driving up the cost of?
I mean, the the use on the food pantry has gone up significantly. Um, the use of the counseling services has gone up. Um, there's just. Um, it just. There are different, um, you know. We just found, in talking to Bethany Zarrah through the budget process, she made a very direct correlation to increased needs. Uh, once uh some of those housing units, so we just need to be.
Yeah, I mean, I think we had COVID too, which didn't help, particularly if you were already in a. Um, vulnerable situation and then COVID happens and your kids are home or you lose your job, what, whatever. I think that it's um. Could be multi-layered, but I think it's a totally interesting data point that we should look at. And I think the impact on infrastructure goes beyond, you know, sewer or water demands, obviously. It's the roads, it's the schools, it's everything that. We love about New Canaan and.
Please.
Yeah.
Where's it, you know, work at though?
So to the point of the costs, one um up here that was discussed, uh. Former chairman of the P and Z Laszlo Pat. Uh, he and I were talking about this years ago. And it would be helpful to the town to institute a infrastructure fund um for any type of higher density development, that are both beyond where our current zoning. Allows. So our current zoning map allows, you know, apartment zone, the resident zone and up to the four acre zone in town. And if there's any development in any one of those zones that goes above and beyond the prescribed units per. Acre or per lot, um, let's say, uh, in the, you know, in the half acre zone, you're looking to build six units, but only one is allowed per. Per code. The five add-on units would have to, the developer would have to make a contribution to the infrastructure fund. That would go towards everything from sewer to water to roads to municipal services, et cetera. Um, and that would be in perpetuity for all developments in town, just to help offset those costs.
Even if the town was the developer? Do we, would we get? Discount?
We didn't think about that. Something to think about.
Yeah.
Thanks, Dan. Any, any other thoughts on AMB? Okay. Four B dash four, public education. The Affordable Housing Committee should provide information to town residents on. The operation of eight third, section eight thirty G of the Connecticut General Statutes, planned or pending applications for Connecticut, Connecticut General Statute, section eight thirty G moratoria. Plan or pending affordable housing developments and locations or types of locations for future affordable housing projects. Four B dash five, funding. The Affordable Housing Committee shall identify additional, and this goes to some of the different things we're talking about, including what Dan just brought up. The Affordable Housing Committee shall identify additional funding sources to supplement the Affordable Housing Trust Fund fee. And shall assess whether the structure of that trust fund needs to be updated and whether additional funding mechanisms should be implemented. So it seems to me what, you know, one of the things we're, we're going to need to think about is if we want to go in that additional tax. Type direction. You know, what is the most efficient way to do it? You know, because there are a bunch of different ideas that have been kicked around. You know, one could be just increasing the current affordable housing fee, so. Um, so that'll get into, you know, funding, financing. And then four B dash six, reports. The Affordable Housing Committee shall propose affordable housing plans as required under section eight thirty J of the Connecticut Stat- General Statutes. Krista referred to that earlier. B, provide input on the subject of affordable housing for the town of New Canaan's plan of conservation and development. Dan talked to that. Um, and as I mentioned to Dan, hopefully there will be a rebound process if SLR has, you know, some expertise they can also provide us with. And C, prepare an annual report on the committee's activities to the town bodies represented on the committee. Um, any thoughts on the mission? We've been talking about it for a while, but. Um, so next steps, um. What does everybody think? But my idea, as I I said earlier, was a good next step could be an education session. Where they sort of say, yeah, here's what we need to learn. Um, and you know, that there's obviously a bunch of categories and they have some questions to get after those categories. Uh. And then we'll try to identify the right speakers. I mean, some obvious speakers I would think is, you know, obviously Nick Bomati or whoever the right person is on the legal side. And we can save some money by having them zoom in. I'm sure that's a little bit cheaper. Um, so, you know, what, some of the areas that I thought about, it was clear, was, you know, the legals. Um, you know, another idea could be to get like a area housing expert. I don't know who it is, but you know, it could be one of the organizations that are already out there to talk about. You know, what is the affordable housing need, particularly in Fairfield County? You know, we've, we've talked about the ideas with uh Margarita Greenwich, uh, we're at potentially Derry and folks, so here's what some other folks are thinking about. Um, but, you know, it seems to me a lot of this is, we we have to learn about. You know, what our reality is, which is, you know, the Fairfield County area and what, where the challenge is specifically. the Fairfield County area, and what are the challenges specifically to that. So what do you guys think? Is that a good next step?
As an interim staff, I wonder if it would make sense to compile a list of what we ought to have seen, read, even visited. One of the, as I mentioned to Tucker, was that I don't know if anyone else, you only have intimate familiarity with the various housing that exists. I only have anecdotal, I mean, I would love to to really go around and take a look. I can do that on my own if nobody else feels the need, but it would be great to know, you know, the library presentation recently, and walkable cities and towns, I thought was relevant and fascinating. We've mentioned a bunch of things tonight, but I wonder if we ought to put together all those things. Just background knowledge for that information.
Yeah. Mike or Scott, is there, you know, easily reproduced, re-papered information, say, I can perish and Mill Pond, or?
We'll probably do up some sort of a faction.
Maybe something, I mean, from the moratorium, you might be able to pull the pages from there about each of those projects.
They have basic stats in it.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Are there any, are there any unoccupied units at Kane and Parish that we could just go take a look at? I mean, it's been a long time since I've seen, I'd just love to see a unit if.
Always turn over, and so after we try to set up a board, and have our property managers can let us know when something goes through, pass along.
And the grounds are phenomenal. I mean, it really, it really, really is a gold standard of developments. I think we knocked it out of the park there.
Free land, sixty vouchers, no interest rate, before construction costs explode.
I don't have a beer here, Scott. Yeah, no, but it really, it really is a spectacular, really nice development. So, yeah, if we could get in to see an apartment for anybody who wants to go, I think that would be valuable, just to get a lay of the wall.
Scott, there was a video, right? There was a video at one point that did a walkthrough, we could probably share that, too, if that's still exist.
David Willard, he was our representative, did that with his company, too, so I'm gonna see if I can get that video inserted, again, just put out to our folks.
Thank you.
Just let everyone else, whoever can swing by, just come by.
Do you think David would be a good person to come to if we have an education session?
He really knows the world, but.
Yeah, he might be a good person to reach out to.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah, I was planning on the development side itself, and then again, he's got some other experience in other states.
Yes.
So what about use of solar, when these units are built, to provide appliances and that's something we should be thinking about here for us?
I would call it all a math equation. I mean, we have solar over Kane and Parish, and we've got a big flat roof, and subsidies at that time, and the prices and everything worked out to be very clear.
Yeah.
At various times, it's not as favorable, we've got slow roofs, what's the aesthetic versus the payback? You have the wrong creatures or exposures, doesn't work otherwise. A lot of building these days, I mean, it used to be like lead, silver, lead gold, and I think like you get a building from that, you've got to get at least lead, so you don't have the same paperwork you part of, or efficiency and stuff. It's pretty intense.
It was mentioned earlier, I do highly recommend listening to the planning and zoning meeting that Nick Bomati spoke to, and Sarah. And Dan, do you remember the date of that meeting?
January twenty-fourth.
January twenty-fourth, it's on the town's website. And for planning and zoning meeting, it was mercifully short. But I found it to be just very, very concise and very relevant. So for those of you who haven't listened to that.
John?
Yeah.
There's, there's the Office of Legislative Research, it's a two-page document, thirty-two. And then I found the town's affordable housing plan from twenty-two useful.
Yeah.
Office of Legislative Research.
I'll certainly.
Oh, great.
Yeah. Okay.
John, what, what date was the P and Z meeting that you referred to? I couldn't hear it.
January twenty-four, Joe.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
John and Chris, do you want, I mean, we're coming up with a lot of ideas, we want us to send you guys.
That's what I'm thinking, yeah.
And then you guys can pile it, suck it out.
Yeah, and I think maybe what we try to do is come up with a couple of major topic levels. And then, you know, think about a couple of speakers under each topic level, if that makes sense. Scott, Dan also, well, you've got Krista running, running for you, you've got, you've got Mike running for you, but, you know, think about. And then Deanna, I guess one question for you would be, is there some administrative help we could get within town hall?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, okay, great. Okay, I'll follow up with you on that. What else, guys? Good stuff. So I think what we've agreed to is we'll target, hopefully it's a month from now, that'll be our learning session. You all will funnel your ideas to Chris and I, Chris and you, and I can sort of figure out how we want to look down. But feel free, I think, to also help us categorize it, you know what I mean? You know, I'm sort of thinking, what's the need in Fairfield County? You know, financing techniques is an additional step, you know, clearly eight thirty G, Nick or Pete, or whoever the right person is, will give a teach-in for us on that. But I'd say, you know, think about the categories that will be most helpful to you. Another idea, I mean, I'll ask you guys, we could judge this too soon, but, you know, should we maybe take some input on the state of property and repayment?
Yes.
Okay.
I do have another idea, but, so WestCog is doing a study in Fairfield County, determining what are some best ways for each of our towns to meet our eight thirty G
Yeah.
threshold. And so that might be a good thing to bring Francis Pickren's, a wealth of knowledge.
Francis is still doing it?
Yes.
Okay.
I know they hired someone to do the study, and I recently texted him, and he told me that they're working on it. Soon, soon to be done.
Yeah, WestCog, so that's a regional planning authority, if I got the definition wrong. Marie, or somebody tell me. But the bottom line is, they've always struck me as having some pretty good resources, and they, seems like they have bandwidth.
Absolutely. And they have a great website, so there's a lot of information on there about housing and leave that's more impartial.
Yeah, and I always said to myself, we need to use up more of their bandwidth. Since we're paying into that thing, right?
We are.
Get our money.
That's a great idea. Okay. I think we got a lot done. Anything else? Anything we didn't cover, we need to cover?
It'll be helpful to get the timeline. You know, I'm sitting here listening to everything we have to do and thinking about having a training session four weeks from now. There's a lot to read during that, so it'll be, it'll sort of sound like we should be moving quicker. I don't know how we can do that, or a suggestion, I just, it's a lot of work, right? A little scary. Because we haven't decided anything yet, and I think, yeah, so we have to help sell this.
Well, we're gonna, I mean, Bill, I, we're gonna need a little bit of time.
You can always add ones, right?
Yes, we can. Okay, so everybody good? Okay, motion adjourned. Thank you. Everybody have a good night. Beat the rain and snow.